Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to our special meeting Tuesday, May 23rd. This is a budget special meeting. It's our second study session that we're -- that's taking place today. For the record, we do have a quorum. All members are present, and we'll call the meeting to order. Before we proceed to public comment, just want to make sure that all our announcements are in. Just reading through my notes, bear with me. I think we've got it. Look for -- okay. So with that, I'm just checking over my notes. Thanks. Okay, got it. And we'll move on to -- we'll open up with public comment. As soon as we're done with public comment, we'll move on to the topic of the night for this special meeting. With that, we have two speaker slips. We have Chief Craig Allen and then Maria Lamelli for public comment on this item.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity, Board members, mayor, staff. I'm Maria Lamelli from Morro Bay Police Department, and I'm not a public speaker, so I'm going to read off my notes. I wanted to talk about the funding for the school resource officer position. As a result, recent budget cuts within the San Luis Obispo Coastal Unified School District, the Morro Bay community and its schools stand to lose an important and valuable resource, the school resource officer. Over the past six years, the district -- the school district and the community have come to depend on the school officers to be liaison between the community, schools, and the police department. School officers are unlike other officers within the police department because not only are they specifically trained to deal with issues arising in school environment, but they act as a resource to the school and the community -- in the school -- in the community to identify, address, and resolve issues before they escalate to potentially dangerous situations, which put students, teachers, and community at danger. In the last six years, the Morro Bay School Resource Officer has been instrumental in reducing the number of incidents at all the schools located within Morro Bay. Morro Bay Police Department implemented the school officer position budget after budget cuts eliminated it several years prior. Upon reimplementation in 2011, the school officer responded to nearly 500 calls for service and took approximately 120 relating to school incident reports. Since 2011, the numbers have significantly declined. This year, the 2016-17 school year, the school officer has responded to 182 juvenile-related calls and taken approximately 40 incident reports. This is a 63% decrease over the six years in calls for service and a 67% decrease in incident reports. The school officer position has been crucial in reducing the number of school-related incidents and making the schools and the community a safer place. We are looking on the -- we are looking -- we are on the brink of losing this pivotal position, which provides more than just the law enforcement aspect to the schools, teachers, and parents. FBI and national statistics have proved the importance of the school officer. A school officer focuses on juvenile-related issues, crimes, and investigations, and responds to juvenile-related calls at schools and within the community, as well as being a visible deterrent for fighting bullying, drug and alcohol use, and other crimes. The school attends -- the school officer attends school functions and after-school events such as sporting events, school dances. These actions increase visibility and accessibility of the police to the community, which facilitates a safe and familiar friend to student who develop -- who personally interacts with kids to develop strong relationships in which they feel comfortable reporting things like child abuse, neglect, and mental health issues.
I'm going to have to --
That might not otherwise be reported.
I'm sorry, but your time's concluded. I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
Okay. I urge the board not to take the approach of believing that nothing will ever happen in Morro Bay and to take the steps necessary to protect our schools and our community by continuing to fund the school officer position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Chief Allen?
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, and fellow department heads. So I'm the future police chief. I'm actually unemployed until June the 2nd or so. But it was very important for me, as I learned about the school resource officer issue, to just be here and underscore the importance of this program and its impact on the community. There's actually nothing more impactful that a police department can do than to be mentors and examples and role models for our youth. As a matter of fact, that very experience is what got me into law enforcement, mentoring at a very young age when I was in schools in the L.A. City School System. So I understand the fiscal issues involved, certainly, but there is nothing more important in terms of mentoring and developing than being available to our youth. And so I would ask you to consider the importance of this. As you know, Maria's position extends so much further than her work on the school campus. The -- her availability there, her investigating juvenile crimes, and all of these issues are very impactful. There are many things that cannot be measured, often by statistics, and much of that includes some of the calls that Maria gets from parents who are in distress, who need counseling and parental counseling, those kinds of issues, youth in crisis, and those types of things that don't always make it to the statistics. So I just wanted to underscore the importance of our youth in the community, of role models, positive role models, and mentors, and that is what I'd like to emphasize. That's why I'm here. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. With that, we'll open for the presentation, and Craig, you'd be leading us off on this. Appreciate it.
Yep. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, community members, thanks for taking the time to attend our budget study session number two. So real briefly, the purpose of this study session is for staff to revisit the proposed FY1718 proposed budget as presented before council and any -- and identify any of the revisions outside of now having the budget binder we talked about from the last presentation on May 9th to now on May 23rd. So real briefly, looking at the timeline, same timeline as last time, except for you'll see the May 9th budget study session number one highlighted in green because that already took place, so we're now on May 23rd. What we do have is a May 30th kind of holding place for a budget study session number three if needed or requested by council. Important note on that end is, given the time to kind of turn around and produce a budget like this, that study session would be more geared towards staff coming back with some specific responses to questions from the council or identifying some areas to discuss further at that budget study session, rather than producing an entirely new budget book in a couple days here. And then the ultimate goal is to have council adopt the FY18 budget on June 13th and a backup date of June 27th, just in case that doesn't happen, so we can hit our target of adoption by the end of the fiscal year. So just going to briefly go through about six more slides here, so council has plenty of time at this session to deliberate and provide direction as appropriate. First, we'll identify the changes from the May 9th presentation. Second, we'll go over specific items of interest that are included in the budget as well, and I'll highlight in a few minutes, and then the next steps. So this slide's a little busy. Apologies for that. It might be a little hard to read. But looking at the changes from the May 9th presentation, as noted, there is the budget binder, or draft budget binder, in front of you. So it's the traditional look at all the different departments and funds and things like that, with the caveat that there are three items that are not included in there because of staff time required to turn that around in a short timeframe. Those three are the personnel map, which has the personnel costs split out by department and then by fund, which we'll get to that by June 13th; the general fund forecast, which is that 10-year forecast, including current year proposed budget figures; and also capital CIP sheets that we'll get to in just a few minutes. Also was included is a budget memo with supplemental information based on a few things. So the first couple pages of the agenda packet tonight has that budget memo. So the top section titled "Study Session Number One Follow-Up" has a breakdown of a couple items that were asked, or a couple questions that were asked at that May 9th meeting. Those include contracted legal cost. There was some concern that the general fund was footing the entire bill for those contracted legal services, and you can see in the chart there. There's a breakdown amongst the enterprise funds as well. There's also a breakdown of the accumulation funds for both the water and sewer. There were some concerns that there may not be enough funding available as a cash balance in those funds to take care of some of our CIP needs in the future. Again, there's a little chart breakdown from there. There's a breakdown of some of the personnel cost differences from the current year FY1617 to FY1718 proposed budget. There is a breakdown of the cost by fund for the proposed personnel revisions that we're recommending for fiscal year 1718. A brief mention of some of the other items, such as the Public Works intern and what those impacts would be, as well as staff consideration of the state Route 1 closure through Caltrans' updated estimate of September of this year. Immediately behind that is a council two -- traditionally, these are called 2-2-1 meetings, making sure that we don't have a quorum in each -- any of those meetings. However, those turn into a 2-1-1-1 meeting, which is perfectly acceptable because it's still less than those three required. Just a few notes on that, and that are identified in the memo, and want to make one point of clarity that there were no Brown Act concerns with that because we did have less than three. All of the big-ticket items that came out of that that were appropriate for this budget were included as notes in this budget memo, and actual budget numbers that are included in the proposed FY1718 budget did not change as a result of those meetings, simply informational. And lastly, there's an--
Craig, thanks for bringing that up. I just want to highlight, we talked about that at our last budget meeting, as far as at the close of that study session, we'd be able to conduct some of the 2-2-1 meetings, and, you know, they'd be question-based, no direction, and all the information that was discussed would come out in this meeting. I think it's important to highlight that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. There's also a note on the Citizens Finance Oversight -- or Oversight Committee, excuse me. They had a meeting about the Measure Q expenditures and their recommendations going forward, hence some of the public comment that we had related to the school resources officer position that we had. Also, we have draft capital improvement program worksheets that are still in draft mode. So if you flip to page 151 of your budget packet, you'll see an example of how those project sheets are proposed to change. The last numerous years, the capital project sheets didn't provide a lot of detail of what exactly was included in these projects. They'll link to if there's some kind of public safety concern where the long-term funding comes in, when we anticipate project completion, things like that. So in staff's opinion, we've created far superior CIP worksheets that are much more transparent in what we're doing. However, you only see one example. So we'll have the rest of those by June 13th, but if you flip to pages 149 and 150, you'll see the schedule of capital projects that does have the total by funding source of what we're recommending for inclusion in the capital projects. So the total dollar figures are there, and they match your budget worksheets. And also, as mentioned by the Public Works Department at our May 9th meeting, there would be a few items taken out of the water and sewer enterprise operating funds and moved to where they're more appropriately tabbed in the capital project worksheet. So just a little dollar difference in there. Lastly, there are two corrections on the general fund emergency reserve, page 105. The amended budget for fiscal year 1617, the total closing cash balance should read 3.956 million. If you look on that page, on page 105, we had a calculation error where it didn't pick up some of the changes in that emergency reserve for the current year, so it reads 3.609. So just a little point of clarity that we'll go ahead and fix going forward.
So if I'm reading that right, on the -- under the 2016-17 amended budget at the bottom, the correction is 3.956 -- oh, 3,956,729 at the ending cash balance at the bottom? That's--
That's correct, and you'll notice that is the starting beginning cash balance for the proposed 1718 figures, which would just be a carry forward. So there's just a little calculation error that happened in there.
Thanks.
And lastly, on the sewer accumulation fund, page 92, you'll notice there isn't any interest income posted as revenue, just a small oversight. So we're projecting that figure should actually read $22,000, which is similar to the water operating fund as well. So given the way we pull all of our cash, we spread out the investment income, so interest income that we've got based on the dollar figure that we have in each respective fund.
Okay.
So a note on the general fund emergency reserve, Resolution 33-15 sets the general fund emergency reserve annual minimum fund balance levels, and as noted in the presentation, those figures for current fiscal year 1617 are 3.272 million as a minimum fund balance, and for next year 1718 is 2.685 million. So funding over minimum balance per that Resolution 3315 can be expended per -- by action of the city council. As noted, the fiscal year 1617 end-of-year budgeted fund balance, we have at 3.956 million, which I just mentioned was one of the errors that isn't showing up on there, but is for the start of 1718. And then with our proposed budget going forward, it's only reduced slightly by $585 for 1718. Obviously, that could change as a result of a potential action item on tonight's council, but as things change, we can revise from there. We had another question on the city manager opportunity fund, which is a chunk of money that's been established in the city managers' fund, which began in fiscal year 1516. So there was $30,000 in 1516. That was reduced $5,000 for the current fiscal year 1617, and our proposed budget, that's proposed to reduce down by another $5,000, so we're only recommending $20,000 for that fund. Just to get an idea of what's come out of that fund, as far as expenditures current fiscal year, we've got a little under $14,500. The majority of that was for a Roger Brooks Community Economic Development Seminar, which is an open event here in Vets Hall, and that took place in winter of last year. There's also a smaller table sponsor for the Central Coast Aquarium fundraiser of 500, and just under $2,000 for the Amgen tour for a few marketing costs, and there's a little trophy cost in there as well, so things like that. So that's just a little flavor of typical items that have come out of that fund. And as noted, that fund has been reduced $5,000 per fiscal year, including our proposed figures for 1718. Another item that -- excuse me -- came out of a separate agenda item on May 9th was the finance manager limited-term addition discussion that we had. Council directed staff to come back and kind of revisit this discussion with the budget at tonight's meeting. So just to recap, the reason for the recommendation to add on this four-year limited-term position is enduring lean staffing in the finance department. The general fund portion was assumed at 75% of the total position costs, which nets to just over $91,000 per fiscal year. Non-general fund portion at 25% was just over $30,000 a fiscal year. We did look at some contract-related quotes to see if we might be able to get someone contracted in for kind of task-specific things. The hourly rate was -- didn't seem worth pursuing that avenue. The total was $135 an hour at the bare minimum to get someone in, so if you have a full-time person in, 135, you can assume $280,000 a year, which is far more than we're looking at for this full-time request. So some of the options could include reducing spending somewhere else in order to transfer in of supplemental general fund emergency reserve funds. And as noted, staff did not recommend areas to cut that $91,000 from. There are some areas in the draft budget letter, which we'll get to in just a few minutes, where there are some potential cut areas looking forward. Not saying staff is recommending those by any means, but those could be some areas to look into as well. And staff didn't feel it was appropriate to prioritize other areas of spending, say in tree trimming or a teen center or something like that. Staff didn't feel as appropriate to prioritize those for council via recommendation. So another item, specific item of interest, was the council bequeaths. So historically, SCORE has had a $500 donation that has come out of the city council budget, excuse me, and the purpose of that is to assist new businesses in our community. There's also been a slow housing trust bequeath that's historically been $1,000, also coming out of the city council budget. There was a home share slow request last year that was fulfilled at $5,000, and this came out of the Housing and Lou Fund that the city has. The purpose of this request was to provide some low-income housing assistance in Morro Bay. So one of those was fulfilled this current fiscal year, which is good news. So there's been a request to bump that level of funding up to $10,000 for the 1718 fiscal year. Senior Nutrition has a recommended bequeath, or what's been included in the draft proposal, is $5,000, which is consistent with historical figures. What that basically is, is a Meals on Wheels program for our local Morro Bay residents. Economic Vitality Corporation had a $5,000 contribution last year out of the city council budget. The request for this year is $10,000, to bump up that contribution and double that essentially. There's also a request by the Astero Bay Alliance for Care, so Eback, and that's consistent with previous year requests for fee waivers for the use of Vets Hall on Monday nights, which includes some provisions that, you know, they would clean up and make sure nothing was left out of place or anything like that. So lastly, staff are available to answer any questions or respond to any direction that council gives. As mentioned, if needed, we have that May 30th date as kind of a standby in case we want to have another session to kind of vet some of the concerns or areas if we don't get those tonight. June 13th, we hope to -- or we will return with any changes as directed by council, along with the couple items we didn't have in there, the revised CIP sheets, personnel map, general fund forecast, things like that. And lastly, as a backup, we have the June 27th council meeting as the last regular council meeting to adopt the FY1718 budget in this fiscal year. So with that, leave it open to questions.
Okay. Thanks, Craig, and I just want to do also thank you for stepping up as our acting city manager, carrying forward, so I just want to express our thanks for that. And with that, I'll open up for questions from council, and I'll look to my left, and maybe Brett can start us off on questions, and then we'll get started from there.
Thanks. Craig, if we could go back to the benevolence fund, the slow housing trust of $1,000, can you tell us what that is?
I'll maybe take that. I actually sit on the Housing Trust Fund Commission, and so they provide loans for affordable housing projects and for underserved populations, homeless transition, things like that. So they provide short-term and long-term loans to help get projects off the ground. Their loan portfolio also helps with projects to acquire tax credits. It provides, if you get loans from the Housing Trust Fund, it does provide points in the tax credit process to help them get tax credits as well. And they serve, you know, all of the jurisdictions in the county.
Okay, thanks. And Craig, the other -- the requests that you showed on that slide is, I assume you're asking for council to provide direction on those requests tonight?
Certainly, that would be the ideal outcome, actually, for tonight as a whole, to receive direction on specific items like that, that the council would either want to see added in, removed from the budget, revised, things like that, so we can come back with a, hopefully, fairly polished product by June 13th.
I think I want to pass for now.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Matt.
Craig, if you can go back to the slide where you had, where you're talking about the general fund emergency reserve, talking about the amount, what we have in there, and then the amount that we've agreed as a council to go to. My question is going to be, what percentage, and I know we've been talking the last year and a half or so, in terms of keeping the state, the recommended, I forget the group of people that recommend, I think it's 15 or 16%. Historically, we've had 27% in that G-FER. What are we going down to now?
With the proposed 1718 budget, let me respond to you in a couple minutes on that one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's significantly over the 27.5%, though.
When we think of the 3.6 million we have in there, it's significantly over the 27% that we have in there. But then thinking of the recommendation that came from the group of folks--
Management partners.
What is it?
Management partners.
Management partners. They had recommended 15 or 16%. And so I just wanted to make sure, not just for this budget talk, but also, well, actually just for this budget talk, but then later when we get into the other things. Okay, if you can hold that question, then that's all I have.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Craig, for the presentation, and thank you, staff, for all the work that you did to get the budget binder for us. I know it's easy for us to look at this, well, not easy, it's complicated, but I know the time behind it was significant, so, and you had a short period of time to do it. So please thank everybody involved for making that happen. Really appreciate it. It's very helpful to have this. Just a couple of questions, since we've had an opportunity to meet and ask line-item questions, I just want to reiterate what possibly the mayor had said, and that is that we did not, in our individual sessions, or whoever had a two-on-two, make recommendations, but we indeed asked specific line-item questions regarding the budget. So I'm not going to repeat that hour-and-a-half session's worth of questions for the audience, but thanks for being available to do that. A couple of things that just come to mind that I had questions about, looking at the revenue side and realizing that TOT tax is the driver, or a major driver, for revenues. I'm wondering what consideration and what conclusions you came to with regard to the Highway 1 closure and the impact on tourism that might have over the next year, and then now, of course, it just happened, but we have this massive landslide that lord knows how long it will take to get that taken care of. So could you just review the assumptions that you made in TOT and how they were affected by that?
Certainly. Great question. As outlined in my supplemental budget memo, brief, actually not outline, a brief mention, rather, we did consider the state Route 1 closure with our forecast for both TOT and sales tax. More importantly, on the TOT side of the house, that would be more directly affected by SR1 or some other closure, like we saw with the closure of Highway 41 that we had recently. TOT has been coming in at a greater-than-5% clip over the last fiscal year. That was trending up by quite a bit. That took a little bit of a dip because of the closure of SR41 for some time, and that's why we're not projecting to go higher than that at our mid-year projections. We didn't recommend going above of 5% for next year either, even though that trend was trending higher than 5%. It was more in the 7% type of range, so we reduced that by about 2% just to make sure we're on the safe side and we're not overinflating our revenues.
Okay. Good. Thanks for that. And do you, we don't have the answer, I guess, time-wise to the question now about how much longer Highway 1 might be closed because of the recent landslide, but-- longer Highway 1 might be closed because of the recent landslide, but I guess that's something that possibly you'll have to look at between now and the final revision, if indeed TOT might be affected by a longer length of time of closure. So, I don't know if you want to comment, but it's more of an observation than a question, I guess.
Certainly. And just a quick note, we are monitoring with Caltrans pretty frequently on updates on that, so we're keeping abreast of any kind of updates on the timeframe as well.
Great. And then, could you, since it's also a big driver of revenues, could you, mainly for the audience, review the assumptions for sales tax, given the fact that there's a huge movement towards online purchasing? And many big-box stores are not only closing, but showing losses. Not that we have a lot of big-box stores in the area, but it does, according to some of the local vendors that I've talked to, it's beginning to impact their businesses as well. So I'm wondering what kinds of assumptions we might have made with regard to sales tax revenues for next year, and the impact of the internet on that.
I think you're breaking up a good point that cities all over and counties all over are struggling with, the move to online sales is, there's no denying it. You'll see the Amazon Marketplace sales tax, which goes in the county pool chair, go up every single time we get an update from our sales tax consultant. The good and the bad news for Moro Bay is the vast majority of our sales tax comes from hotel stays, restaurants, and gas. So all three of those are pretty well shielded from the internet boon or the switch to internet. That doesn't mean it doesn't affect us, it just doesn't affect us as greatly. So our forecast going forward, we've fully vetted with Bob Leland of Management Partners when we were doing this 10-year forecast, to account for things like that. So that did drop it a little bit, but not dramatically.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that. And then I noted that, if I'm correct, at the CFAC meeting, and thank you, Ms. Lameli and Almost Chief Allen, for your comments on the SRO, that the CFAC considered that. And can you just tell me, at that meeting, what their discussion might have come to and what conclusions they came to?
So that falls under the other category of the supplemental budget memo. Number one on there, there's a note that on the May 17th meeting, CFAC was asked to weigh in on the proposed expenditures for 1718, given that that's kind of the intent behind why the CFAC was created. So we wanted to get their impact on what we're proposing. The CFAC unanimously approved recommending all expenditures that are included in the recommended list outside of the staff resource officer position. There was a pretty lively discussion on the topic. What it ultimately came down to, for CFAC, again, this is their recommendation, not staff's recommendation, was if the school district didn't have the funding available to move forward with that, then the city shouldn't be financing the entire position. They were looking at that without the totality, in my opinion, of what that position brings to the city, as far as juvenile assistance, keeping kids off the streets, providing the home checks and all the things Ms. Lameli mentioned a little while ago. I'm sure Acting Chief Cox behind me can expand on that in great detail. We've been through it over and over, and that's why staff's recommendation is to fund that position 50% general fund, 50% Measure Q, with the idea that this strategic approach would allow for some potential natural turnover that would happen and that we've seen in departments. And if and when that might happen in the police department, then we retain that institutional knowledge. And one of those positions would fall away following that vacancy. So this staff resource officer position would be funded until that vacancy occurs, at least through the next fiscal year with the split that I mentioned with Measure Q and general fund monies. And from there, we can still retain both the public benefit of that position, the institutional knowledge, and have a more strategic approach to the situation versus a straight cut.
So if I understand you correctly, the CFAC did not recommend, or the Measure Q folks did not recommend funding, and the CFAC board also did not recommend, or advisory group did not recommend funding?
I'm not sure I follow the difference between the Measure Q group.
CFAC being the general oversight group for city expenditures and revenues, Measure Q Oversight Committee is part of CFAC's function. The request that I think was made was a 50-50 split using the general fund and 50% from CFAC, excuse me, from the Measure Q monies. So they considered both of those and basically did not approve, or did not recommend, I should say.
They did not recommend as a board, knowing that both of the groups you described are one body, essentially. They have the exact same makeup.
Right.
So that was a recommendation.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. And then the last question with regard to that position is this, what I hear you saying is that there is a recommendation to keep the position as long as there, excuse me, until there's turnover in the department, the police department, and then this position would morph into the filling of whatever position might turn over, but that we would retain institutional knowledge, yet use the full, lose the full FTE benefit that is being espoused by Officer Lameli and Chief Allen. Am I correct?
See if I'm tracking with you there.
Okay.
So the idea would be, a department of that size traditionally would have a turnover almost every year. That's just naturally kind of what happens. With that knowledge in mind, rather than taking a draconian approach to the situation, given San Luis Coastals' limited resources to fund half of this SRO position that they traditionally do, staff felt it was appropriate to have this kind of phased-in approach, knowing that generally there would be that vacancy next fiscal year. The recommendation would be to have this funding in place for one fiscal year, and a few months before the close of the fiscal year, before budget study sessions like we're doing right now, we would revisit that if that weren't the case, if there wasn't that vacancy, and come up with a plan from there. So did that answer your question?
Somewhat, I guess. I don't mean to prolong it, but let me just end it with this. So staff thinks it's viable as long as there's not a need for the officer to move into another position when there's turnover. And then the viability that has been espoused by Chief Allen and Officer Lameli is no longer valid?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Then the position for finance for four years, that's a management position that would be a Tier 2 Calpers position? Is that correct?
Well, it couldn't be a Tier 1, and we'd hope to get someone with some experience from another jurisdiction, so odds are it would be a Tier 2. But potentially a Tier 3 as well.
Okay, so the answer is yes, yeah.
Most likely.
Okay. And then would that position, the cost that you have in there, is it, is the cost greater when you consider benefits, or is that the fully loaded cost that you have in there?
No, that's fully loaded.
Great. Just wanted to clarify that. Last question I have is, has to do with the allocation to the T-Bid Board. And if you could just speak to the accelerator that kicks in this year, I think we moved from a $38,000 to about a $74,000 or something like that contribution to T-Bid, and that over time can accelerate to a total of $300,000, if I'm not incorrect. And that, I believe, is in the budget, yet I'm wondering, given the tight fiscal constraints, but also realizing the importance of the T-Bid and the actions that are necessary to maintain tourism, what the thoughts were in possibly reducing that or decreasing that allocation, and what the impact might be?
So for the T-Bid, the Moro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District, you'll see on page 97 of the draft budget binder, kind of going down on the top section on revenues from, there's a line item in there that says Promotion City Contribution. So current year, there's a $60,000 figure plugged in there, and next fiscal year, it goes up to just under $135,000. So what staff did is looked at Resolution 03-16, which essentially took the T-Bid in-house, along with the corresponding staff report, to look at the intent of how that inflator would go forward. In a nutshell, that Resolution 03-16 stated that the intent was to initially outweigh $60,000 as a contribution to the T-Bid from the general fund as our support to the program. From there, the idea was to get to an end total on an annual basis of $300,000 per fiscal year. The nexus behind that was through the work of the T-Bid, that should drive up our TOT revenue. And as that TOT figure keeps going up and up and up and up, the incremental amount above $3 million for the city's share, the 10% TOT, so the baseline was $3 million, so 20% of that is $60,000, where they got the $60,000 figure. So when we're projecting the $3.475 million figure for the end of the current fiscal year, 20% above that, to meet the idea behind that Resolution 03-16, equates to the addition from $60,000 to $134,900 of almost $75,000 additional dollars. To get to the second part of your question, this was a council action via resolution. Council certainly makes the best decisions possible based on the data available at the time. If the council wanted to revisit that resolution and the intent behind that, maybe based on changing assumptions or realities, certainly they could do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Marlos?
I wanted to also thank you for all the hard work you put in. I know it was a long weekend for everyone. And appreciate all of the information, and also making yourself available so that we could talk and ask questions. And I know I met this morning also with Commander Cox, who was generous enough to share with me his thoughts about this school resource officer position. I do have some questions, and one of the things that I approached the budget with was, I'm going to try to find that money to fund the financial person, because I honestly believe that it's a very necessary position. I know how understaffed the department is, and I know that there is financial work that needs to be done, should be done, will make the department more efficient, that isn't being done, and that we've suffered some really negative audits as a result of that. So I'm going to ask you some questions that relate to finding the money. First of all, if you could, I'm going to revisit the city manager's opportunity fund for $20,000. And since this is a fairly new budget item, it struck me that, why couldn't the city manager simply come to the city council if there was some opportunity that he felt needed to be funded on a short-term basis? So wouldn't that work just as well, or is there a rationale for why he needs discretionary money? Or she? Or it?
I wasn't going to assume. So I've worked in several jurisdictions, cities and counties across the state, and seen it done a few different ways. Some city manager or chief administrative officer, if you're in a county, do have a fund like this set up, and actually, the majority probably do, that I looked at, probably 80%, 75%, somewhere in the neighborhood of there. The dollar figures range drastically. In my opinion, that comes from trust. And a lot of times, it'll be an opportunity that comes up kind of last minute. And by last minute, I mean, you've got a week to figure something out, or a week and a half. And yes, city council does have meetings traditionally every other week where you can come forward with something like this. If you've got good trust with your administration, this dollar figure of $20,000 is a drop in the bucket to be able to respond to these on a quick basis. In my personal opinion, the last thing I would want to do is to hamstring our new individual, he or she, that might be, going forward if they've got some great ideas in the middle of the year with coming forward with another item. Certainly, that can take place and will take place for bigger-ticket items. This is meant for more kind of little items, you can move on pretty quickly, that under his or her discretion might have a positive economic development opportunity for the I think $20,000 is a pretty fair figure, but certainly it's open to direction from the council.
Yeah. Well, it's not just a matter of, you know, having to do it in a hurry, it's a matter of having the money. So I'm looking for some places where I might find some money, and this seemed like one that isn't really a great cost at this point to the city. The second one was I noted that there is an appropriation for elections this year, this coming year, $10,350. But I'm wondering, is it really needed unless we have a special election?
In short, no, it isn't. The intent of doing that on a yearly basis, though, is basically to make sure you have consistent funding from a year-to-year basis, knowing that an election is going to cost you roughly double of that potentially. So just to make sure you're staying ahead of those election cycles, it's either pay half of it every year or double it up the year after, just to make sure you don't lose sight of that.
So the actual cost when we have a 2018 election is going to be twice this?
Potentially.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess I'm not going to get that money.
Well, you can have it now, but you've got to pay for it twice next year, so.
Well, maybe we'll raise more money next year. Then in human resources, there's contractual services, $35,000, which is the labor negotiations. And I'm just wondering if that is for a single year, or are we hoping that we're going to be able to negotiate a multi-year contract, and so maybe we won't need all of that this year?
Without speaking too much to a closed-session item, that amount was programmed in as if we were going to have annual MOU negotiations.
Okay.
If that weren't the case, then that would be a savings.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Police Department, sorry. Professional Development, there was $50,000 budgeted for post-compliance training, but the note says that the minimum of $40,000 is needed, so I'm wondering if we could get another $10,000 there?
Well, I'll jump in real quick and then ask Commander Cox.
Okay.
Acting Chief to expand a little bit. My understanding is that that $44,000 is for the bare minimum legally required post-training.
The $40,000, but this is requesting 50.
So the incremental increase for that was just other general, might not be directly related to the post. I just don't think we had that level of details, but I'll let Commander Cox respond to that.
Thank you, Craig. And if I can jump in on that, the post-training, as we mentioned briefly earlier, is that there's both, there's two levels of training that is required in law enforcement. One is legislative, and one is through post, which is the peace officer standards and training. As an example, this year, we went over that $40,000, and then we had to cut back. I actually haven't been sending my guys to training for the last month or so, because we reached the edge of that budget. And if we don't have it, I can no longer send them. There are courses that, outside of what is legally mandated by either post or legislation, there are other specialty-type training courses that we need to send people to, depending on their specialized positions in certain investigations, homicide investigations, rape investigations, juvenile investigations, those types of things. And then again, things like the motors training, things like that, to keep us updated every year or every other year, depending on the requirement for the training. So that's why that increase was there. Typically, we had discussed the possibility of recovering some of this cost through our post-reimbursments. However, the money that is, that we receive from post-reimbursments goes back into the general fund. So I cannot use that post-money to extend the training protocols and requirements that we have, because it's going back into the general fund. And this year, to avoid having to discontinue training or advanced development, that's why the increase is there this year.
Okay. So presumably, the reimbursement shows as revenue in the budget? So, presumably, the reimbursement shows as revenue in the budget?
Yes, ma'am. I think we discussed that earlier today. You had a question in regards to the increased miscellaneous revenues, and I think we had just received a check for about 13,000 through the post-reimbursements, which went back into the general fund, which, that which we get reimbursed is more than the increase here, so...
Okay.
But that's why the increase.
All right. Thanks. Then also, this is in the Fire Department budget now. I just need to understand if the current budget includes money that we would expect to be reimbursed for mutual aid, and my understanding is it does not. Is that right? I see a nod, yes. So, it does not include money that we might be reimbursed for mutual aid services, but does it include all of the expenses associated? No. Okay. I see.
So, real quick, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's done it. We do that at mid-year, because it's an unknown figure at this point. So, that'll just be something we'll take care of at mid-year.
Both expenses and revenues?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, you're not, you're not... I'm not making much progress here. Well, I also noticed in the T-Bid, the extra contribution that Mr. Heading has already noted, and it seemed to me that that might also be a place where, with another resolution, we could find some additional funds to use for your finance person. So, we've already pretty much talked about that, what would be necessary if we were going to do that. My last question has to do with the council bequests, and my understanding is that you have budgeted 8,000 in bequests, but obviously, the requests here exceed that. So, were you thinking that we should pick and choose at this point, or just allocate an amount for bequests, and then at a later point, maybe make a determination, or how would you think we should proceed with that?
Counsel can certainly go, you know, whichever way they determine is best. Whichever of these bequests seems like a reasonable public benefit to fund, then certainly, we can program that or fit it in as appropriate. It might involve little cuts and tweaks in certain areas, we can certainly do that. If council feels more, it would be more appropriate to allocate a specific dollar amount, can certainly do that. I'd rather advocate for, here's a request we have on hand and go from there, versus having a dollar figure moving forward, just my opinion.
I just thought I remembered that you had in the budget, you, we initially saw 8,000 for council bequests, so that's why I asked the question. So, that's what's in the current budget, correct? So, that if we go over that, we're going over that.
Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
But if I can point to one quick thing, as you'll see on this slide there, the home share slow amount of 5,000 for this year and the request for 10,000, and also the slow housing trust, the 1,000 historical, those two can come out of the housing and lieu fund, and there would be sufficient funding in that fund to pay for both of those, if the council so chose. So, that 8,000 figure was strictly out of the general fund city council budget, just a point of clarity.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your questions, Marlos. I'm going to start off with the council bequests as well, and I'm just going to, Scott, you were talking about the slow housing trust fund, which you sit on, and the 1,000 is a historical. What is that getting us? You know, I know it's 1,000 bucks, I know there's more to be talking to, but I'm just going to go through that quickly, because that's kind of what's up on the board. And what other cities contribute, and what's relevant there?
City of San Luis, city of Pismo, city of Grover Beach, all participate. City of Ro Grande participate as well, and all provide money. Yeah, I mean, so, a lot of the cities do, you know, they, they end up loaning money on a lot of affordable housing projects throughout the county, that's mostly what we do on the, you know, what the function is, is reviewing those things when I'm on the commission, and there's also a board of directors, and then there's about three, there's two staff members, and they just hired a third. So, it's, a lot of it's bridge loans, sort of getting you either through construction or to construction, depending on what's going on, and then when you finance into a long-term loan, they get the money back and...
We haven't had any slow housing trust projects come to Morro Bay?
Not recently, no. The last one was several years ago. Moving forward, though, there are some projects that are coming forward that are going to have affordable housing units in them, potentially, and they would be eligible for HTF funds to get those projects off the ground and to help with that sort of, usually, again, it's like that initial financing upfront to get you through construction or to construction, depending on what it is.
So, it's a balance of that housing and lieu fee in what we have that we can invest in the community versus the loan portion that is kind of global for projects, as you described?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, and then, I see the home share, okay. That's the only one I, I think council might have to discuss more of those. So, I just want to go back to the T-Bid question, as far as the resolution on that. Having conversation a little bit about that earlier today, both at bare minnow on the resolution, I, looking at that, needs to come back. I think there's some things that need to be dialed in as far as clarity, as far as being able to, it seems like you had to go into, dive into the staff report to be able to come up with accurate information to make the adjustments needed, and it should have been memorialized into the resolution. So, I just want to make that comment, and that's probably something we need to have come back. But as far as, once we get into discussion part of this, how we go about looking at the available funds for T-Bid, bless you. Realistically, if council, if it's the council's will, I guess we could go for the whole lot of that and rescind the resolution, really is the bottom line with those funds, is that, that's fair to say?
Council can certainly revisit the resolution and everything that entailed, including a contribution.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it's certainly something they could look at.
Okay. And which also affects the item on the agenda tonight, the T-Bid item is on the agenda, which has the annual budget associated with that as well?
It has the annual proposed draft budget, yes.
Okay. All right. Most of my stuff is really in comments and where we want to go there, so I don't have any, I'll refrain from any more questions, and then maybe we can get into the discussion part of it.
Could I just ask a follow-up question to the question you just asked?
Sure.
The T-Bid budget, which is, that we're going to be looking at later, is embedded in this budget, correct?
Yes.
So, it is exactly the same budget that's we're looking at. All right. Thanks.
Bless you.
So, if I can jump back in, just to, Councilmember Makaweski had a question about what we project the general fund emergency reserve percentage to be at the end of last year, and after some quick math at the DIAS, which I don't like doing, but if we can put a caveat, this is a rough number, roughly 31% to 32% is where we forecast that to be, at the end of 1718.
With that 3.8 million in it?
Correct.
Okay.
Or 3.9.
3.9.
Yeah.
Got it. And then, the recommendation is going down to 2.8, and then that means that we would have 1.2 that isn't, that would be above the recommended percentage that council agreed to?
Correct, and on the draft budget page 105, there's that calculation broken down, just so visually, it makes it a little easier of what we project to be end-of-year fund balance at 3.956 million. That target balance at the end of 1718 per resolution, 33-15, being 2.684 million.
Got it.
So, that available 1.27 million above and beyond that resolution is identified in there.
Got it. Thank you, Craig.
Okay. With that, I think that concludes the questions. We can probably start on the discussion part and where we want to get started on that. So, we've got an hour left to go, so hopefully, we can roll through that, and I would look towards the left, Red, if you want to start us off on that. Don't know if you want to start off with council bequests, or if you have your own way you want to start about your direction, but it's up to you.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't done a budget. This is kind of new to me, so, as you say, I'm not quite sure how I want to proceed. But I guess first, I want to say I'm sorry for appearing to be ill. I'm, I have a severe allergic reaction to an overload of pollen that I encountered on a Sunday bike ride, so it's not a contagious illness, and I apologize for my coughing and stuff.
Sorry, you're going through it, Red.
So, I guess I would just begin the discussion by expressing support for, for the recommendation to continue the SRO, because I think it is important to have that preventive influence with our young adults. The liaison and the trust between the community and the high school students, I think, is extremely important, and as in medicine, prevention is cheaper than trying to cure ills later, so, so I would support that. The home share slow, the request is for 10,000, and that can come out of our housing and lieu fund, it doesn't, is not a general fund expenditure?
Yes, it can come out of there.
The Economic Vitality Corporation, that's not listed in the, in the budget letter. So, what is that, and where does that come from? You said we have historical, but where did that show up in the budget before?
So, current year, fiscal year 1617, that 5,000 came out of the city council budget. As you'll note, 8,000 with everything else doesn't include 5,000 towards Economic Vitality Corp. That could certainly be something that we can populate in. It's, my understanding is a consortium within San Luis County, and it looks at a whole host of benefits that could benefit regional, not only regionally for San Luis, and we'd be a partner in that effort, and then get essentially the buying power of several jurisdictions for what our little 5 or 10,000 contribution would get, but also benefits us here in Morro Bay with some ideas and strategies and things like that that could help. Not saying that takes the place of an economic development strategic plan, or someone in-house doing some of that work, but that's the concept, as I understand it, for that Economic Vitality Corp.
Okay. And on the T-Bid resolution, I do feel compelled to say that, that resolution and the amount of money that the city promised to contribute every year was part of the, the promise that we made to the hoteliers, and I would be concerned about how we go about changing that amount without significant input from the hoteliers, because as so much of this is, it's a matter of trust, and we made them a promise, and I would hate to, to just arbitrarily break that promise, so. So, that's all I have right now.
Thanks, Red.
In terms of discussion, I think the plan we're talking about with school resource officer, I agree with Red, and I think with other folks, what we're talking about, I think the big one right now, and I agree with you, Red, is the T-Bid discussion. I think in the past few years, as we've worked with T-Bid and then bringing it into the city's fold, and even this year with the Highway 1 and 41 closure, T-Bid and then the, the city workers within T-Bid, perhaps were fortunate socio-economically to get such a good crowd to come into Morro Bay, for those numbers to be so high. But I agree with you, Red, in terms of working with T-Bid and making that promise, I would be very hesitant to say, let's just bring that money back into the fold. Right now, it's paying off, no pun intended, and I think moving ahead, and I think, John, you bring it up with the Highway 1 closure, that's going to be closed between the bridge and then the big landslide in the lower, that's going to be closed for up to a year. So, we can't necessarily count on that. But however, cross your fingers that the 41 stays open. But with this planning and what's going on with T-Bid and going out and with their T-Bid plan, I think that we're working on, if not all cylinders, because some of the closures, we're really putting a lot of work, the T-Bid is, and so, I would be very hesitant to use, to bring that money back in, although I do understand our circumstances. In terms of the donations, I'd like to use just what we can with the housing and lieu funds, and then I'd be willing to bargain those other numbers from going from 5,000 to 10,000. Perhaps we don't go up to the 10,000 on some of those donations, and we keep to what we had it at last year. And that's about it?
All right. Matt, thanks. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it, you know, it's whitewater times again with the budget, and a 12,000 bottom line on a 13 million general fund budget is basically balanced, but is really nothing in terms of reserves. And my concern is really not necessarily just for this year, but future planning and future impacts and future unknowns that are becoming a little more known that, and I'm looking for those little silver clouds and the little silver lining, and I haven't found too many of them, unfortunately. So, with that, I think that the, for me, if the school district has financial challenges and doesn't see a need to support, continue to support their half of the SRO, and our CFAC makes a recommendation and measure Q as well, considering that body being one of the same, to not recommend supporting it, I have difficulty hanging on to an FTE. I recognize the positive impact, I talked to the principal about the impact and the importance to our young people in modeling this kind of relationship in community policing, and I very much believe in that and am a great supporter of that. However, in whitewater times, things become scrutinized to a greater degree because of the basic needs of the city needing to be met, and at present, even though we have a balanced budget, if you look at the budget summary, we're not meeting about 4 million dollars worth of needs that are just basic needs for the community. And so, although I hate to consider this an extravagance, and by no means do I mean to disparage in any way the program, at this time, I would have difficulty continuing to support it, given, given those reasons, and it's heartbreaking for me to come to that conclusion, because I have grandkids in the school district that I think benefit greatly from this, or would, or hopefully will. But looking at the big picture and looking at where we are and seeing no relief in the future for this city in terms of revenue enhancement and/or major cuts, I think we're chipping bone right now with the city, that it really makes me get down to the level of scrutinizing very, very closely everything that we do, and so, therefore, I cannot support that, again, also given the community vetting group that we have, the CFAC has that same recommendation. I would agree with both Red and Matt with regard to the T-Bid allocation for this year, that I thought a lot about that one and looked at it as possibly low-hanging fruit, and then the more... then the more I looked at it, the higher it got on the tree, and I couldn't grab it. And the reason for that is it's our number-one revenue generator for the city. TOT is number-one, and anything that we can do to ensure that that continues and that increases over the years, and I do believe the dollars going towards that will help do that, I support. And so, at least for this year, I can't personally recommend changing that allocation, but I do think it should be on the table for consideration, to look at maybe a reduction in a go-forward manner on what percentage we allocate in the future, and that would be a discussion for next year's budget, for me, anyway. I'm really torn on the finance position, because I'm the one, I think, that beat the drum for finance and for resources there, because of the shortage that not only I see, but our external consultants have validated twice, each of them twice, have validated that. And I had hoped that there would be another way to look at funding some kind of additional assistance above and beyond, an added FTE that would have a fully-loaded benefit package and be a managerial position. And so although I would feel comfortable with some placemarked dollars in there, I'm still challenged personally with going forward on something that will continue to have an impact over four years with an accelerator possibly due to increasing payroll costs and CPI increases, et cetera. And so I'm looking for some middle ground there by putting a placemark in at the halfway point and saying, figure out how to get some resources, but not fully fund it at a full-time FTE with benefits that continues on position. I sit on the EVC board as a liaison and attend their meetings. All cities contribute to the economic countywide group. It has had some major successes, most recently with expanding the air service, now dealing with some of the issues that have to do with the closure of the nuclear plant, and working collectively with cities and bringing resources to us that are available to assist us with the implementation of the plan that we're about to consider in the next few weeks, our economic plan. And I do believe in continuing that. However, instead of moving from 5,000 to 10,000, maybe moving from 5,000 to 7,500 might be a compromise for this year, seeing how it goes for another year. But I do think continuing to be involved in that and supporting it is important. And so those were the contentious issues, and then I have, I'll just read 10 things I think you need to do as a staff to get a handle on the future. First is, if we haven't implemented, I think we need to implement a hiring freeze. Number two, I do believe that there should be a capital project review, and by the way, I love that new form. That is a great form for tracking that. Awesome. Appreciate that. And I would delay where possible and prolong, try to prolong the life of capital assets rather than purchasing right now, and I would look at lease versus purchase, do an analysis of the lease versus purchase on some of those. The third would be to evaluate PTO accumulations or paid time-off accumulations, and consider a pay-in-lou program where you make sure that if people accumulate kind of a high-level vacation benefit, and I know we have a policy that mandates that you have to take a certain amount of time, but you can have kind of a pay-in-lou where you pay them now to not take a week if they don't want to take the week or can't. And then that saves money down the line for the city. If they take it much later, then their salaries are higher. And so I would consider or suggest looking at that, and then the whole paid time-off program, and I know that's a negotiated benefit with unions, but I think for long-term, I think that's important. Four, I would implement travel and training restrictions, and to a bare minimum now. I would do that now. I did not look at each department and suggest where to cut, but I would suggest that's the first place, one of the first places you look at. Required training, such as Chief Cox has mentioned, you have to do, police fire, those kinds of things, but even some of the discretionary programs, I think, you have to look at and minimize as much as possible. Five, I would implement an overtime approval policy. I would not allow overtime to occur at the discretion of the individual employee, and I would look at your policy and have a very strict approval process for overtime, except in emergency situations where it would be mandated, and again, maybe if you have some of this stuff, that's cool. Six, I would evaluate voluntary furloughs. Believe it or not, when you make it available, some people like to take time off and in lieu of pay. And so if you offer it, you may find that you can maintain productivity but also save some dollars with mandatory, not mandatory, but voluntary furloughs. Seven, I would evaluate revenue enhancements, and as much as, I'm going to hear a yell in the audience about using consultants, I think it's extremely important that we not look just on the expense side of this budget, that we do as much as we can to enhance revenues. The majority of initiatives that we have are long-term initiatives, will not bear fruit for five or 10 years, and I think that we need some expert help from a revenue consultant that could identify for us short-term opportunities for enhancing revenues, such as maximizing fee structures, capturing new taxes or new utility fees that we don't have, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Where am I? Eight, I would ensure that we evaluate our investment policy. I don't believe, I know we don't have a lot of dollars in investments, but I think we need to have CFAC vet that. I think it's on your list of things for them to do, or maybe not, but I think we might be able to improve our return on investment, and that could add dollars to the city's coffers. And, I don't know, where am I? Nine? I don't know. You know, most of the literature supports asking staff, how can we cut? And I've heard that we've talked to department heads who have looked carefully at the budget, but I think some kind of initiative to get staff involved, you know, the old staff cost-reduction things bear a lot of fruit. And so my suggestion is that somewhere along the line, we ask all employees to give you or give us suggestions about cost-cutting and/or revenue enhancement in the city, and I think it's important to engage everybody fully with regard to that. And lastly, I guess this kind of ties into the revenue enhancement, but I would just want to make sure that our fees are being fully covered. And so I know we've done some increases, and we've looked at a number of different impact fees, but I'm not sure we're fully covering cost across the board, so maybe that's part of the revenue enhancement opportunity, but that'd be something that I would look at as well. And thank you.
Thanks, John. Marloes?
That's a hard act to follow. Let me begin by saying that I actually agree with everything that John just said about moving forward and really beginning now to do some, a hard look at cost-cutting, and I would agree with all of his 10 recommendations with one possible exception, and that being hiring another consultant to look for revenue-enhancing opportunities. I honestly think that when we just have paid for a strategic economic development strategic plan, we should actually start by implementing it as opposed to hiring another consultant, and I think that maybe the staff can come up with some of those ideas on their own. So, but I think it's, I think it's time to start looking at those things and to consider them as part of this budgeting cycle. With respect to the School Resource Officer, I have, after talking with Commander Cox and Bonnie Johnson, the Support Services Manager, I can understand that this position does way more than sit in the school and just be a school resource officer. It seemed to me like it's a truly valuable position, that's a prevention position that really works with juveniles when they're possibly in trouble and tries to keep them out of trouble. And so it's a position that isn't just assigned to the school. I know that it has far more responsibilities than that, and I think it's a valuable resource in the community and would support using Measure Q monies and the general fund to fund it. I also agree that we should wait on the T-Bid this year. I understand that we've made a promise, and even though we would like to use the money now, I think it's better to wait and see what happens, and maybe spend a year looking at how much revenue we actually make and talk with the hoteliers and get a better understanding of what the overall financial position is before we make a decision on that. With respect to the bequests, I think my recommendation would be that we set a limit that we want to come from our fund, and then perhaps look for other sources like the Housing in Lew fund for some of these others, but I would set it at 8,000 and perhaps come back with how we want to allocate that. I just don't know enough-
Set what? I'm sorry.
At 8,000, which is-
For everything?
Well, no, for, from our fund as opposed to the Housing in Lew fund and other sources, but from the general fund. 8,000 from the general fund, but I don't know enough about all of these programs to make an allocation at this point. I do know, for example, that there's a new state program that's just going, taking place, and they're just starting to set up the structure of it that is going to give loans for building housing facilities for the homeless and especially the mentally ill, and they're also, and rehabbing buildings. So there may be other sources, so it's difficult for me to know how to allocate the money at this point. I just wanted to add a couple of things that we have not, has not been a part of the discussion so far, if I could. First, I noticed in the budget that we first looked at, the SB1 funds would go to pay a large proportion of them for the calpers' costs for maintenance employees. I would like to say, state that I would like to see that money, whatever we get, go to fixing our roads, which is what the intent was. So I just want to say that for the record. I don't know what other people, how other people feel about that, but I do not believe that that money was appropriated by the legislature to pay calpers' costs, so that's my comment on that. Then I also want to make a couple of comments about the budget letter, because, and I've, I'm concerned, it reads like a staff report, not a budget letter, and I'm concerned about, I would remove all of the references to a revenue gap, of which there are a lot of them in that letter. And the reason is, it's very confusing for the general public, it sounds like it's a deficit, and a budget gap, and there's a dollar sign associated to it, with it, when in reality, we have a balanced budget, we're living within our means, and it's the council's responsibility to try to determine what services the community, what services the community needs and what priorities they have, given how much money we have. And that's exactly what the council's been doing, is allocating funds based on what we perceive the citizens want and need. And so the fact that we haven't been able to fund everything is a fact for every city in this country. So to suggest that we need to work on this budget gap, yes, we would like to pave our streets, and yes, I would like, I have some ideas about how we could start to get more money in that fund, but I think it's misleading to the public to talk about a gap, and it does lead to confusion. Now, I do think that we need to be very much aware of the calpers' problem that's coming down the road in three years, because that's a real budget challenge. But the others are simply a matter of how we've chosen to allocate the revenues and the resources that we have, so I would remove that reference. I also would not include any possible budget cuts that we might make in the future, and there's something in the budget letter that talks about possible programs that we could cut, and I think that's very incendiary, because this is a budget for this coming year. It's balanced, and we're not cutting any of those programs. So to include in the budget letter reference to programs that might get cut down the road is just, it's not proper. It's just not, it's not helpful. So we'll wait to see where we are at the end of this budget year, and then if we have to make those kinds of cuts, we will. It's fine for staff to look at the budget carefully and look at places where we could make those cuts, but I don't think it's helpful to include in a budget letter. So I raise those issues, because if there's consensus on the council, I'd like to see that happen.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks. Thanks for the comments. I'll get started on mine. I'll just start with the bequests, and as taking notes with everyone. I think the historical contribution for SCORE, not a large amount, but there's good collaboration with that group in our chamber in helping out small business development. Personally, I'd like to probably see a little bit more feedback on how that comes during our updates, but I can carry that conversation on as well, but, so I'm okay with that one. The Slow Housing Trust Fund, coming out of our Housing in Lew, I think that's one that we should maintain, I think, for the statements, I think, for affordable housing and for all the different things, that's one we should keep our eye on. It does come of our, out of our Housing in Lew fund, so I think that's money well-spent. The Home Share Slow, the request for 10, I would, that's a new program that we have supported there. Again, that's another kind of low-income, trying to find housing for people. I think that's important. I wouldn't support going to 10,000, I would maintain the 5, and I would ask for some concurrence on that when we get to those points. And then the Senior Nutrition Program, another one, would maintain that. These are kind of social programs that we've been supporting, the Senior Nutrition one, I think we all can speak to and from experience, whether it's our neighbors or just the different folks in our community that we know about. The Economic Vitality Corp, that's one as far as an investment, as far as investing in the tourism marketing portion of the county. There again, I'm kind of in the hold mode, so I wouldn't go to the 10,000 request, I would maintain the 5,000. The Estero Bay Alliance for Care, fee waiver for the Monday night dinner, I think is appropriate, that's been very successful. Thank you all for doing that. So that's where I'm at on the bequests, and would, and then I'll move on to the other one. The SRO, I would support the SRO position this year, and I think some of the comments about the SRO position was, if there is attrition within the year or so, we would be able to maintain that level of continuity, and we wouldn't have to go through, you know, retraining someone. So if that were to happen, we wouldn't necessarily have the SRO person, we would just have a full-time employee, as I understand it. So I don't necessarily want to get, I'm not sure, I'm convinced that we're going to continue as an SRO program if, as an example, next year, we have some attrition and then we roll the SRO position into a full-time position. So I'm not sure if a year from now, we're going to have, we're going to be discussing whether we have a full-time SRO position at this point, at least that's my view of it, and maybe we can have some clarity on that. And then the T-Bid, I would agree to keep that where it is, but I have kind of a list like John does as well, as how we move forward. I would say with the T-Bid, I think that resolution needs to come back to council, and we should have the discussion and a decision by year's end, and I would suggest that we reduce that contribution by half. So we're looking at a $300,000 contribution. So, we're looking at a $300,000 contribution. Obviously, half, that's 150,000. And I think that's in the target that we need to be chipping away at for our budget. We've been talking about initially making $650,000 cuts. Well, that's another cut that I think is, it's reasonable for the times that we're in. So, anyway, that's my comment there. And then, the bequests. And then, I have a couple other comments. Let me get to my other notes. So, government impact fees. On that particular line item, I'd like to see us come back on, at mid-year, with our government impact fees and our risk management fees and our CDBG fund. And what I'm looking for here is our government impact fees. We've got a fund balance of $662,000 in there, and we've got capital programs list in our budget. I would like to have, at mid-year, you know, to identify what capital projects that are available for those funds. And so, I think moving forward with what we have in the budget is acceptable to me, but I'd like to have the opportunity to fully understand what capital programs or within the government impact fees that we can provide the service with those funds. And so, that's one. The Risk Management Fund, we've got, I'll get to that, the Risk Management Fund, we've got a balanced fund of $799,000. That's appropriate. I know we're, that may be something that we have to reconcile with, with some potential cases there. So, willing to look at that at mid-year. And then, I think for council, we need to look at that. And I think that we've had opportunities in the past to use the balance as an example. So, our Risk Management Fund, our policy there is we maintain $100,000 reserve. And so, anything above that is utilized during this process for one-time spending. So, but at this time, I think it'd be, at mid-year, it'd be good to come back and see what we have there. And I'd probably have the discussion with council to allocate that into our general fund emergency reserve to keep that on the path that we were targeting so we could, in the outlying years that we've been being, looking at, we'll be able to maintain that. The CDBG fund of 209,000, I just want to make sure that the funds that we have there, we're trying to manage every facility and improvement that we can. So, if there's projects out there that we could move things forward and we have funds available, I just want to have a good look at what those are available. So, the CDBG funds and the government impact fees, there's some limitation on what projects are available for that. And we, like I say, when I go to the capital, the capital portion of our budget, we have items that are lined out there to which I'll get to there in a second. And I think part of this process, we need to be doing throughout the year. I know we're talking about, you know, next year, we need to ask the question on whether it's an SRO position. I think we need to be working through this through the year and not have these questions come up on what future program cuts might look like. I think to some point, you know, we've got that on our goals as far as revenue enhancement and being, looking at fiscal sustainability models, but I do believe that we have to be looking at those sort of things throughout the year. So, when it comes to our next budget cycle, we'll be faced with some planning going into that. And then, I'm just going to slip over to our, bear with me, I'm going to get to our capital side of things. I've just got some comments there. So, I'm just going to go, I'm on page 149. And just looking at the line items, I know, I know we get input from our advisory boards on our capital programs. I'm going to look at, pardon me, I'm going to look at Eric and Rob on those as far as Public Works Advisory Board and Harbor Boards and stuff like that. We do get some input on capital programs and enhancements. So, you know, based on that, we're getting fed the information in this budget based on their input. Kind of looking for a head nod on that. I'm seeing Eric. But, Rob?
Public Works Advisory Board, not formally on the capital improvement program. We're changing that this year. And we'll review with them next month, the proposed program. But it's more on a project-by-project basis in the past, is the way the PAB has looked at it.
I'd like to have that come forward. Yeah. I mean, you know, I know we could probably dive into these types of things, and in past budgets, from my experience, we have, we've gone through different things and, you know, called out specific items. The one that comes to mind is the parking lot at Delmar Park. But, you know, and then having said Delmar Park, then I'm also looking at the Delmar restroom, and we've got a line item there, capital project, you know, years out, but we have nothing budgeted for that. So, whether or not we're looking, we're looking at our total overall accumulation fund or if we're just doing a line item, kind of like we are with the elections, we have 10,000 this year and 10,000 next year, or we have it all at once, you know, do we need to be allocating some funds to that particular project this year, next year, until we get to the full funding? Do we want to take that approach, or do we just want to know that we have X amount of dollars in our accumulation fund? We have enough to fund it, let's fund it all at once? Those are type of my questions. I'm looking for staff input and maybe a conversation with council when I'm looking at a line item like that. But I'm not going to dissect the capital budget as it is. I just wanted to highlight that one, particular one, and then just reinforce that we get, it's great to have the input from our Public Works Advisory Board on the capital projects. You know, we can look at the stairs right at the end of the block here as one, and there's, you know, a number of little, small ones that I think are worthwhile. And if they're not on here, if we don't see them, you know, we talk to them, talk about them, and he'd get emails from time to time during the year. But I'd like to see our advisory boards come back with that vetted for us so we can take it on. And those are kind of future instructions for next year's budgets at that point. I've got one other, got one other note for, this is a question for you, Rob. It's one of those items for the water. I talked with Craig about this, not a big deal. I know we'll get to talk about it at our water equivalency unit item. And it's just one of those where, when we come up with, for our annual water report, I just want to make sure we're capturing our contractual obligation. And I know we've had the one conversation about whether or not we're meeting our contract obligation with state water and at that 1.25% debt coverage ratio, which the Poon Group identifies. So, whether or not, you know, we have a note in here saying, you know what, we made that, or our annual report that we'll be having next council meeting, that we'll actually report that out as well. So, I'm just throwing that out there as either a footnote or making sure that it's captured one way or the other between this document or the annual water report. I don't know if you have any comments to add on that?
Well, I know we did a memo regarding that debt coverage ratio real recently. We could add that to the budget as an append, in the appendices as a reference document to basically capture what our, we're a few hundredths of a percent away from making that debt coverage ratio this year, and we'll make it this year, next year?
So, to Rob's point, I think that's not a bad idea at all if you want to memorialize that, have the letter in the back, and then actually on the budget page for water, maybe a little note on there per the letter in the back on page, whatever it works out to be.
Sure.
You know, here's where we're at. We're at 1.16 instead of the 1.25 or-
Yeah.
Right in there.
That'd be great, thanks. Sometimes it's just a little note says, as I go through this from year to year, I know we're kind of developing it, and I just want to say thanks because, you know, we've got budget policies and resolutions in here that's very helpful, and I think that's important, especially when people are looking at the budget overall, and there's footnotes down there, we're asking the questions, how do we get to this? And we can go to the resolutions and policies in the back and have a better understanding. So, those are my comments. I think we need to pull everything together. I think we got consensus on, any more comments on the SRO from that position from council? There's general support for that position I'm getting. I think if we want to go through the council bequests one more time and just talk through that, and then maybe have some closing remarks on any other kind of questions and what we want to see with this budget coming back. And so, I can just lead us off in the council bequests. I know we talked about, and I'm just going to go off the list up there, Slow Housing Trust Fund for 1,000, I think, were we looking for consensus on that?
Is that from the Housing and Lou Fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And I'm, okay, are we, okay? And then, we're looking at the Home Share request was coming from the Housing and Lou Fund, and that, the request was for 10. I would support 5, and you know, I just, I don't know where the rest of council wants to go, or if they're even supportive of that. So, just looking for feedback on that. Matt, you're okay on 5? Red? Anybody else? Okay. So, the Slow Housing, the Home Share at 5. And then, moving down to the Senior Nutrition, I'd support maintaining that, that contribution.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So, we got, we got okay on that. Housing Trust Fund, we got a support on that. And then, the EVC, any comments on that? I didn't know where the board wants to go.
You know, I recommended 7,500, but you know, 5,000, I mean, 5,000 is fine if that's, that's what everybody else feels. I think that's fine.
Okay.
I just, I don't want to see us drop it. I think it's too important of a program to not drop.
Okay. All right. So, we got consensus at 5K. And then, the Monday night meals, that's all for Estero Bay Alliance for Care. So, we got good on that. Okay, so, we got through that.
So, if I can jump in on, I apologize for interrupting. Budget page 52 kind of has a snapshot of some of the carry-forward items. One of the items not on this slide, I apologize for not including it on there, but in the budget page, is $1,000 for the Community Resource Office as well. And that's kind of been something that's been enduring as well. So, just something to think about.
I think it's important to maintain.
I would support that as well. Yes, sir.
On page six and seven, our staff changes recommended, and we haven't talked about any of these, but it's the Fire Marshal-
Yeah.
And Recreation Services, Senior Planner, Support Services-
Yep.
And the Utility Clerk. I would support staff recommendation on all of those.
Okay. I was just going to, we can-
I do as well.
Yeah. I just want to finish one more. There's one more loose end on this, the City Council. There's an open opportunity on this, there's a line item for $1,500 on that. I don't know what that is. I don't feel the need myself, but I'm just curious why that-
Well, doing a quick add-up of our general fund cost of these, we're going to be above 8,000. So, that was meant to have, if you have any incremental, you know, increases that come in between the time we prepared this and the time we end up adopting, that was just meant to be a placeholder. So, we had 8,000 in-
And we can always carry that over.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, all right, makes sense. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, all right.
One more point I didn't hear on SCORE.
On SCORE, I think, I think, I think we got support for that.
Support.
Okay. Just what, Marlos, was that, support?
Yes, yes, yes.
And I'm just going to give a pause and-
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks. Sorry, Red. Okay, so, we're good there, and now we can get back into page three of the, of your letter, Craig, that you sent out. And Red, you want to start off on those comments there for what you're supporting, and just go ahead and start there if you will?
I was looking at pages six and seven. And we did talk about these two weeks ago, just as they were proposed, and I agree with staff's recommendation on all of these.
So, if I can jump in and add a point of clarity, just to get an idea of the dollar figures, you'll see my supplemental memo has the dollar figures listed by fund of what those impacts would be. So, just throwing it out there.
Yep, I'm on that. I'm on, I'm actually on your supplemental memo page, actually. Any other comments on that? Or support, or?
I can support.
Yep. John, Marlos, okay? I think you get unanimous support on that. If we just go through this, and we've got a few more minutes, are there any other, so we had comments on the Public Works Intern, not necessarily a big deal. I just mentioned that, just to make sure that we were, the significance of that and making sure that if there is workload and we could support that, it's not necessarily enduring funds, but for an intern, I just want to make sure that if we do have programs or projects that are needed, I just want to make sure, are we cutting ourselves short and not being able to complete some things with the small amount of an intern? So, I just want to, I'm looking for some input on that.
Typically, the projects that the intern works on are based on the skill set of the intern that we get, so we don't have a specific job that they're fulfilling by having that intern. For example, one year, we got an intern that was very interested in traffic. So, she did a lot of traffic studies that maybe aren't always legally required, but it was nice to get those done. We have an intern right now that is benefiting our GIS section. This current budget proposes to elevate that position to a, more of a temporary employee position rather than an intern because with implementation of city works, we'll need much more support for that. So, that, that's how we would fill that role.
So, in other words, we're not, based on that comment, you're, the allocation of funds for an intern versus a part-time employees in the budget to accomplish the needs-
Correct.
-that we need to get done for our, for the public works?
Correct.
Okay.
And we still have part-time salaries in our enterprise funds that we could fund an intern. This is a cut from-
Within the parameters.
Yes.
Yeah, within those parameters. Okay, okay. And so, basically, that was, we were looking at a $10,000 cut there, is what we were looking at. Any other?
Yeah, we didn't-
Any other comment?
I don't think we landed on the finance position.
Okay, you want to talk about that?
Well, you know, I was, personally, I didn't, I didn't support the addition of a full-time FTE because of accumulated costs over four years. However, I feel the need to allocate something, and my suggestion was that a placemark of half of that amount be placed in the budget for staff to determine how they might accomplish some of the needs through getting other resources as opposed to a full-time FTE.
Okay.
So, it was basically a reduction by 50% with-
Okay. Any other comments on that? Marlos, I'll look, listen to you on that side.
Well, I also agree that I don't think we should be, have, be budgeting for a full-time person for four years, not a permanent employee for four years. I do think we need to put some placeholder in for those services. I still would favor more of a temporary contract, maybe a half-time for a year or something along those lines. I don't know what that would cost, but the challenge is where you're going to get the money, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a question. It's, so, I think we need feedback on that.
No. No, it isn't.
No.
No, it's not in there.
There's no money in the proposed budget for this position. So any potential adds would either come with a cut somewhere else or a corresponding increase in transfers in from the General Fund Emergency Reserve to backfill that additional amount needed.
That's why I was looking so, so hard for your money earlier.
So what's, what is that, what is that halftime number?
So based on 91,000 and change, we're looking at a little over 45,600 or so out of the General Fund, and then incremental amounts out of some of the enterprises, assuming that 75, 25 split.
I mean, I know it'd be, nice to start this right away, but I'm thinking our Risk Management Fund has probably got a cushion there, but I don't know if we need to wait until mid-year to make that determination, and if that, you know, I mean, we've been managing with the personnel and load we have, you know, trying to be helpful, but also cognizant of where we are financially.
We've got two management letters that, over two years, that on the audit have identified significant deficiencies which could have a material impact, or I should say, material deficiencies. And I think they need the help as soon as possible to get it done and get that fixed. That could be a bigger tripper from a financial standpoint to us than the cost of disinvestment, so.
What's your comfort zone on 45 out of the Risk Management Fund at basically 800,000 that we have in there?
I'm concerned with the ability to attract and retain someone for a halftime cost, or halftime position, rather. Given how relatively geographically isolated we might be from some of the greater employment pool in the area, getting someone to come over with some kind of experience within a reasonable commute time will prove to be difficult. And I think we saw that with some of the other recent recruitments. Going to the point of the urgency of the position, today's May 23rd. Fiscal year closes June 30th. Regardless of how we move forward with this position, it's not going to affect the audit findings for fiscal year '16, '17, even if it were approved today. If we went and recruited and we were turning and burning, we might have someone in for two weeks. If we had someone in for two weeks and they can write us comprehensive set of policies and procedures, I would be amazed, and it would be great, but it's just not going to happen. So to the mayor's point, an alternative approach certainly could be, look at the mid-year timeframe and look at the Risk Management Fund. Generally, for the past several years, that's been coming in with revenues quite a bit over expenditures. I wouldn't want to do that now because of some pending issues that might come up. And also the General Fund, that's come in higher than, with revenues over expenditures for several years in a row now, and council's allocated that. So maybe mid-year might be a better time to revisit this full position request with maybe having staff come back on June 13th and identify some options to potentially contract out incremental bits of this, so we can start to get the wheels moving prior to revisiting it mid-year.
The other piece that I think is important for us to, to know up here is that, you know, we have pulled Craig away as the interim, and so I'm, you know, waiting six months for me is really not an option, because we don't know how long it'll be until we have an interim that is in here. And so if you're out of your department for a month, halftime, or more, I mean, we're really, really causing some issues for your staff. I see your head nods over there. So that's my urgency with regard to that, and I get, you know, I don't know if you can go back and find it and tell us where you're hidden, you know, there's always hidden revenues somewhere. I know there's some, but maybe not.
Yeah.
Help us.
I would just also like to throw in that you could consider the possibility of hiring someone on a contract to do some of the other activities in the department, freeing up some existing staff to do some of this work that hasn't, you haven't been able to do yet. So that would be another option where you might be able to find somebody who could fill some of the lower-level positions on a contract basis for a year. Just to give you a lot of options, so that you can look at all of the possible ways of getting the work done.
And we certainly considered that. Looking at the task we identified at that May 9th item where council considered the addition of this position, every one of those targets was kind of a higher level type thing. So we certainly looked at potentially freeing up some of our collective time to dive into some of those policies and procedures, or PO system implementation, or things like that. The hard part would be, there's a lot of intricacies with all of our financial roles, and there are a lot of them spread amongst a limited amount of staff. So if we were going to go down that road, I would want to make sure we retain this individual for at least two years or so, because by the time you get them up to speed, you spend a considerable amount of time training that individual. So that'd be my concern.
I just want to bring to our attention, it's coming up on the 5:30 time for this, so I just want to make sure that with everything that we've laid out here, I think we've laid out that portion of the requests. I think we've covered your, the budget letter. I would agree with Marlos on her statements for the budget letter. I'm a little bit, I have a little different view on the budget gap. I think that could come back. I think, I think that budget gap needs more work. I'm not sure that it needs to be in the letter, but I think we need to have some discussions about that in the future, when, and it might be around the time of, if there's, you know, once we, the laundry list that we've made on coming back of, looking at some of the suggestions that were made as far as what we need to be preparing for next.
I support that.
Cycle.
Yeah, maybe even as an addendum, but, and I do agree with the body of the letter, but, but, you know, if we're not looking at, I'll just use streets as an example, you know, if we're not keeping that out in front of us, that we've set a level that we want to be at, and we're not able to get there, how much are we not able to get there is important for me to know. So I, I want to know that stuff.
So, so with that, I mean. Well, you need, you need this information so you can bring back this document and a budget letter to us, so I just want to make sure we can distill all this down for you. Or you can make sure that you've, you've got a pretty good handle where we're at.
Let me, let me flip through and see how we're doing here, see if we can confirm.
Well, the one thing that we have not talked about is my suggestion that any money that we get from SB 1 should go actually for fixing streets.
I would support that.
So to that point, the language that was concerning in the budget letter shouldn't have read the way it did. A decent chunk of that SB 1 money is not going towards CalPur's cost. Maybe a little bit is, because we have personnel doing those type of services. However, I fully intend to go into the budget letter and make that correction. It doesn't take a reallocation of funding that is going to that purpose. So thank you on that point. So going back, I believe what I heard was consensus on the T-Bid contribution. We had made some promises. We'd like to stick with that and revisit that next year, potentially with the resolution. I did hear one note of bring it back before the end of the year. And I'd like a little clarity on what we mean by the year and what kind of timeframe.
I think if we're coming back at the end of next year, that the T-Bid needs to understand this year that we're looking at cutting it in half. And my suggestion was half. I would like to hear some suggest, some consensus on that, but realistically, we shouldn't get to next year's budget and say, oh, by the way, we want to do this. We should be having those conversations. This is our plan, and we want to start down the pathway of cutting those contributions down in half. So, and I think that's, that goes along with some of the other items that we've been talking about. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I don't know if half is, was arbitrary or not. I guess the point is that it needs to come to us soon in order to reformulate the policy and the allocation. And so I support that as soon as possible, or midterm, or whenever. I don't want to surprise them at the end of the year, next budgetary period, and just saying, oh, we're cutting suddenly.
Right. Can I add something? Yeah, and we're going to have to.
Totally. But really quick, I do believe T-Bid, I do, I would like to bring it to T-Bid before an official meeting. I'd like to give them a month or two meetings to talk about this. This is a very sensitive issue, and you're a very vital partner to our situation, and so I would not want to just spring it on them at a city council meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and I, you know, we were looking for some direction on that, and I, I threw it out, and so we'll get started somewhere. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I think we've got some clarity, bringing it back early next fiscal year at some point, no later than mid-year.
Okay.
The School Resources Officer, I believe we had a majority decision, I'll say. Not consensus, but majority decision to keep it in as proposed with the 50-50 split.
Yep.
From a process standpoint, I just, may I ask a process question? If the Oversight Committee for Measure Q indicates that they're, they didn't approve the allocation of dollars for half of it out of Measure Q funding, is the consensus group suggesting that that comes out of General Fund 100%?
No, there was not the recommendation to have the General Fund fund 100% of this position.
So my point is, there's an Oversight Committee for Measure Q, and they recommended to not support it. And my question is, maybe Joe, this is a question for you, if by virtue of the initiative, there's an Oversight Committee that's appointed, and they make recommendations, is it just like any recommendation to the City Council? City Council then could act yea or nay? Okay, great.
Going back, I saw head nodding from all fives on the requested position changes that have all been included in the budget document. The bequests, I heard the breakdown of home share 5,000 is good, again, coming out of the Housing and Loaf Fund. Same thing with 1,000 for the Housing Trust Fund. 5,000 for senior nutrition. Economic vitality, I believe we landed on 5,000, going from there as well, continuing that. SCORE, the $500 bequest was good, and the 1,000 for the Community Resource Office would I did hear a little discussion from a couple members on the budget letter and the potential to remove some items on there. Leaving it open for maybe some consensus on that topic.
Yep.
So I'll just add that there was a group, the CFAC, that worked on a budget-friendly document, and, so I don't, I mean, did a lot of work on that, and I don't see it. So maybe that format or something, there's a lot of time that was spent in that. I don't know where that is, or.
Great point, and I should have mentioned one of the next steps when we bring forward. The final proposed budget on June 13th for adoption will include that exact thing. So thank you for that note. And I mentioned that to CFAC as well.
Okay, so the budget letter, there's, I would agree with the future program cuts and not having that in there. I would agree that basically the budget letter as presented is more like a staff report than a narrative, and I would, I would support basically covering, covering it more in department funds and that type of narrative. And then there was a question about the budget gap, whether or not that needs to be removed. But I'd definitely support the future program cuts and put this more into a narrative form and then the form that it's in. And I think, Marlos, you had some comments, any more comments?
Well, as I mentioned about the budget gap, I think it's absolutely appropriate to mention what we're going to be facing in three years, because that's a real thing. And it's appropriate to say that we don't have all of the money that we need to fund the services at the level that we'd like to see them, but not necessarily to outline how many things we need, because that's presuming that if the citizens had an opportunity to decide on this budget, they would agree that.
Right.
And that's, you know, we speak for the citizens, so.
Yeah, actually, we haven't had that conversation with the community yet either.
No, no, so that's a presumption that we should be funding all of those things at that level that I don't know is necessarily valid. So as I say, we can certainly say that about the streets, but, because we know we haven't been funding streets at the level, but.
So just as a point of process, we're, the meeting is slated to end at 5:30, and we're over, so either we can roll this up, or I'll just make a motion that we continue for another five minutes, five more minutes, and then we can finish this up. And I would need a motion to continue for five more minutes.
Five more, motion to continue for five more minutes.
And we have a motion and a second. Motion by Marlos, second by Red. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed? Okay. So we have a 4-1. So let's move forward, and we've got five minutes to wrap this up. So, Marlos, you're finishing up on this part of it?
Well, just said, that's the way I would rework it, so that I wouldn't be very, I wouldn't specifically identify areas where we should be spending more money. I would just make the general statement. And I would, I think it's really important to emphasize that we have a balanced budget.
Okay. Any other comments on the, on the budget letter? Kind of consensus with the general theme from comments? Okay, thumbs up?
Yeah, I just, I think in the budget letter, that's fine, but somewhere, the reality, just like a 10-year plan, you know, we've not approved a 10-year budget, but we do a 10-year budget planning primarily to understand where we are in the future. And if you look at the capital budget, capital budget is out a number of years, which means we haven't approved it as a city council, but those are all place marks that are in there. So the point I'm trying to make is that the issues that are raised on there are extremely important issues, like can't fund our streets to this level, and because maybe sometime there's going to be a discussion prompted to, to reduce the expectation. And that's my concern, and that we don't lose it so that we don't miss the opportunity to discuss possibly adjusting our expectations.
Okay.
I'm not going to argue it.
Okay. So at this point, Craig, if we're to conclude this, if, questions?
So thank you for that. Appears we have consensus on that as well. And the last item was on the Finance Manager position. I think I saw some head nodding with having staff come back on June 13th to see if we can identify a little bit of money potentially for.
Some contract.
Maybe some contract-related stuff, and then we'll revisit with mid-year with some of those traditional carryforward. That's what I heard.
June 13th or on May 30th?
June 13th.
June 13th.
That'll.
Good.
This'll be the budget, we'll come back at that point, yeah. So we have general consensus with that?
Great. So we'll plan on taking this input and recrafting the budget letter or the document as a whole. We will come back with revised capital sheets based on the example you've got in there that will look clean and fresh and all those fun things. And then we'll add in the three items we don't have yet, the General Fund Forecast, Personnel Map, and again, those capital sheets. So I think we're set to go for 13th.
All right, Craig and your staff, thanks very much. I know it's been a lot of work putting it to this point, and we just want to say thanks.
Sure thing.
And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.